Okay, I'll call this meeting of the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan Review Committee to order. We have one item of business which will take us no more than half an hour. And then we will adjourn and have a joint session with the planning board on other topics that are on their agenda. All right, the first item on the agenda is to receive nominations for peer reviewer and select a consultant to recommend to the town manager. This is a continuation of a discussion we had last week, scope of work for peer review of tasks that is being prepared by Sterns and Wheeler. And this has to do with the comparison of centralized versus decentralized collection and treatment systems on seco shores. So I'm going to turn it over to Steve. We had a subcommittee of Steve, Trish, and Jerry Potomac.
Everybody has a packet of information in front of you. It is information of everybody that we spoke to, copies of emails, so everybody has full disclosure of what Steve and I did with Jerry's assistance. We spoke with Craig Goodwin, Bruce Douglas, Peter Gross, and Mike Dominica. Bruce Douglas, Mike Dominica declined because of the time schedule and staffing. They weren't even able to really address it to us. We checked references on Craig Goodwin and Peter Gross, did some research on the internet. Steve has spoke to both of them, Jerry has spoke to both of them, and their references. And we would like to make a recommendation with what we found, what we were comfortable with talking with them and explaining what we were looking for, that we would like to recommend Peter Gross. And that's our recommendation to the committee.
Okay.
After what we've been hearing.
Could you give us a little more in-depth on both Steve Goodwin and his business and experience, and Peter Gross and his business and experience?
Steve, I will let you go.
Yeah. Mr. Goodwin, all four of these people are judged to be peers, which is why we reached out. And Craig is with a company that basically does design, build, operate of wastewater systems. Jerry helped me out here with it. They got, we got a good response back.
Positive.
Positive on both of them. He was not a PE.
Turn those mics around. Thank you.
Okay, you said Craig Goodwin is not a PE.
He's not a P, but that wasn't necessarily a negative. That did come out in looking at it a little bit. There was a lot of information where he's made presentations and whatnot, but didn't seem to be as strong a basis of design as Peter Gross when we looked at it. That was one of the sort of scale tippers for us, I thought, a little bit. Peter Gross happens to be an individual whose name came up because he's done a lot of decentralized work along the Long Island Sound area, and in particular, Old Saybrook, is it Old Saybrook? Old Saybrook, he's done quite a bit of work there, as well as he acted as a peer reviewer on...
Brantford, Connecticut, you just did a review on some of their work for their consultants.
Okay, in Brantford?
In Brantford, yes.
Okay.
He's not afraid to pull something apart and give a negative that she did on that one there.
Both of them were comfortable with the fee structure. They didn't, maybe the one said, oh, it's not enough money, the $5,000 is fine for both of them.
Okay.
So there was no differentiator there. They each had sort of the four items that we've put out there, asking for them to get back. Peter did not provide confirmation that he would perform across applicable regulations and laws. And Craig, help me out here, Cherry, did he?
Oh, I thought the question was, he basically didn't say what staff, it assumed he was going to conclude. They were both substantively compliant, since this was, no matter how you look at it, an informal solicitation.
Okay.
And some of those things have to be signed off anyways.
So what we've included back to everybody in the committee is a copy of the solicitation that went out, it happens to be the one to Craig, but they just changed the name at the top. And then if you go in a little bit here, you'll see the response from Peter Gross. And then in addition to the information that was made available to the committee at the meeting last week, Craig Goodwin's response as well. And then you see Mike Dominica's declining, and Bruce Douglas's declining as well. At least responded on qualifications for Craig as well. We did it quickly, so.
That's, we thank you for that, to fit into one week. Do we have questions on what's been presented?
Seems good to me.
Okay, no issues. Eric?
We have two apparently well-qualified people involved, and the amount of money is so small, it's the only reason we couldn't consider hiring two.
Comments from the board? What do you think?
I have my opinion.
Peter?
Yeah, I have an opinion. In fact, I think we should. I'm perfectly satisfied with the credentials of Mr. Gross. He looks like that firm has done the kinds of things that we're looking for. As I've reflected about what we're trying to accomplish here, I think what we're trying to demonstrate is a full scrutiny of the comparison of the two, decentralized and centralized. I believe that Mr. Goodwin has demonstrated a credential that Mr. Gross may or may not have, that I think has some validity. And that is that he was invited to the Matt Patrick event three, four months ago. And that says to me that he has credibility and standing among the people who believe that clusters are the best solution to the Cape's wastewater problems. Now, it may be that Mr. Gross has the same standing with those people, I just don't know. I think we know about Mr. Goodwin because he got invited, and he was a part, one of the presenters. And that says to me that there's a value in having both of them do it. That in fact, yeah, it's another $5,000, but I guess I agree with Eric that that's really not...I'm sorry, Paul Brodeur, for many years, would say to me, that's short money. I don't think he ever said, that's long money. Everything was short money in this case. I guess I agree that this is pretty short money. And I guess that added dimension. Whether or not it is redundant, I don't know. Whether or not it would temper the accusation by those who would wish to levy it, that this is a bag job for all those who are big pipe people, I don't know. But it just seems to me that it has a value, and that the extra $5,000 is worth that extra step.
Did you both talk to both Peter and Craig?
Yep.
And sort of interactions?
Yeah, they're both very professional. They both seem ready to do the job. I think going with both of them is actually a great suggestion in a lot of ways, because I do both believe they're both peers. I do believe they both bring a little difference between the two of them. You know, I was sort of impressed by where Peter had done his work with Old Saybrook, which is going forward with a decentralized system, and is overcoming a lot of sort of hurdles with that. So he's got an appreciation for, you know, how to look at it that way as well. So, yeah, I think both of them would be great if we can do that.
If we could do that, that would be, and as Peter said, you know, short money, yeah, very short relative to what we're going to be spending here.
We're making a big decision.
Sure.
Making a big decision.
And also, given the fact that we've expanded the scope to seek their input, it might be helpful to have more ideas.
Yes, yes, yeah. I think that's a very good point.
It's great.
So, any other issues, questions on this? If not, then there would be a motion to appoint, to recommend. No, sorry? Well, we're going to recommend this consultant. The town manager has to actually do the hiring.
Correct.
And so we would be a motion to recommend Craig Goodwin of NCS Waste Water Solutions, and Peter Gross of Fuss and O'Neill.
Should we recommend them in order of Fuss and O'Neill first, in case they choose not to fund both? Or selectmen have to reapprove the funding?
No, this will come out of the contingency amount, they got part of the $150,000.
So we can choose to do it?
Well, it's the town manager who makes the decision. And I would, I think we forward this report to him, so it's clear the subcommittee had a preference.
Okay.
But that the committee felt it was valuable to have both reviewers.
And it appears to be unanimous sentiment, which I think carries weight. If we were split five to four, that might be a different story. Okay, we had a motion, I'm sorry, and who made the motion?
You suggested it.
I suggested it, but Eric made it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Peter Boyer seconded it. Okay, because you're taking minutes today.
No, I understand.
I beg your pardon, Sandy, I'm sorry. All right, all right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? No, it's unanimous.
Good.
Want to thank the subcommittee for pulling this together so quickly. Very nice job. Yes, Jerry?
It just doesn't matter particularly, since next week, I'm heading to be ready for a few weeks. I'm assuming that as soon as Bob gives an okay, we can give an oral notice to proceed to both consultants, subject to whatever administrative paperwork we need the others with, and some of that stuff. At this level, sometimes, you know, our requirements may be thicker than the RFT.
Okay. I'm sure that Bob will, or Heather, will do that process. The scope of work that was sent to all of these firms had the original dates on it, because we didn't realize there was going to be slippage, or at least we didn't discuss the slippage until this very same night. So in fact, they will not be receiving, we don't believe they will have a deliverable on July 9th.
We verbally let them know, four individuals.
Okay.
And we verbally gave them a sense of both what our expectations were a little bit.
Okay.
As well as the fact that the timetable is a little bit of a moving target, but once Sterns and Wheeler's got a timetable, we want them to be moving on fairly quick.
Beautiful, all right.
Yeah, they understand that the dates of everything was perfect, but things will move by a week or two.
Okay, wonderful. All right. We have not planned any other items for tonight. We have a regular meeting next Tuesday, 5:00. And so I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, and then we will commence with the planning board.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, seconded. Okay, Priscilla? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We have a few minutes recess before...
All right, so turn the mics the other way, and it'll pick it up.
And we're then sitting here.
I think it's going to be crowded.
I think it's going to be crowded.
Is anybody next to you, Patricia?
Patricia, I know, while they're taking the bar.
John, do you want to sit next to him and talk?
Is anybody next to you, Patricia?
No.
Patricia, I know, while they're taking the bar.
Oh, I don't care.
I have to waste time, I just run with hours and hours.
John, do you want to sit next to him and talk?
You don't mind where you sit?
Me too.
Me three.
I'm here, we can get the...
Let's, there's 24.
Okay.
That's a big playtime.
Redford, Connecticut, you just did a review on some of their work for their consultants.
Okay, in Brantford? Okay. And sort of interactions?
Yeah, they're both very professional. They both seem, you know, ready to do the job. I think going with both of them is actually a great suggestion in a lot of ways, because they, I do both believe they're both peers. I do believe they both bring a little difference between the two of them. You know, I was sort of impressed by where Peter had done his work with Old Saybrook, which is going forward with a decentralized system, and is overcoming a lot of sort of hurdles with that. So he's got an appreciation for, you know, how to look at it that way as well. So, yeah, I think both of them would be great if we can do that.
If we could do that, that would be, and as Peter said, you know, short money, yeah, very short relative to what we're going to be spending here.
We're making a big decision.
Sure.
Making a big decision.
And also, given the fact that we've expanded the scope to seek their input, it might be helpful to have more ideas.
Yes, yes, yeah. I think that's a very good point.
It's great.
So, any other issues, questions on this? If not, then there would be a motion to appoint, to recommend. No, sorry? Well, we're going to recommend this consultant. The town manager has to actually do the hiring.
Correct.
And so we would be a motion to recommend Craig Goodwin of NCS Waste Water Solutions, and Peter Gross of Fuss and O'Neill.
Should we recommend them in order of Fuss and O'Neill first, in case they choose not to fund both? Or selectmen have to reapprove the funding?
No, this will come out of the contingency amount, they got part of the $150,000.
So we can choose to do it?
Well, it's the town manager who makes the decision. And I would, I think we forward this report to him, so it's clear the subcommittee had a preference.
Okay.
But that the committee felt it was valuable to have both reviewers.
And it appears to be unanimous sentiment, which I think carries weight. If we were split five to four, that might be a different story. Okay, we had a motion, I'm sorry, and who made the motion?
You suggested it.
I suggested it, but Eric made it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Peter Boyer seconded it. Okay, because you're taking minutes today.
No, I understand.
I beg your pardon, Sandy, I'm sorry. All right, all right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? No, it's unanimous.
Good.
Want to thank the subcommittee for pulling this together so quickly. Very nice job. Yes, Jerry?
It just doesn't matter particularly, since next week, I'm heading to be ready for a few weeks. I'm assuming that as soon as Bob gives an okay, we can give an oral notice to proceed to both consultants, subject to whatever administrative paperwork we need the others with, and some of that stuff. At this level, sometimes, you know, our requirements may be thicker than the RFT.
Okay. I'm sure that Bob will, or Heather, will do that process. The scope of work that was sent to all of these firms had the original dates on it, because we didn't realize there was going to be slippage, or at least we didn't discuss the slippage until this very same night. So in fact, they will not be receiving, we don't believe they will have a deliverable on July 9th.
We verbally let them know, four individuals.
Okay.
And we verbally gave them a sense of both what our expectations were a little bit.
Okay.
As well as the fact that the timetable is a little bit of a moving target, but once Sterns and Wheeler's got a timetable, we want them to be moving on fairly quick.
Beautiful, all right.
Yeah, they understand that the dates of everything was perfect, but things will move by a week or two.
Okay, wonderful. All right. We have not planned any other items for tonight. We have a regular meeting next Tuesday, 5:00. And so I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, and then we will commence with the planning board.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, seconded. Okay, Priscilla? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We have a few minutes recess before...
All right, so turn the mics the other way, and it'll pick it up.
And we're then sitting here.
I think it's going to be crowded.
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 Oh, I think that's an easy sell.
Well, there's precedent, but start there.
Yeah, the pieces that Peter is talking about are not controversial. I don't think Beetham Hill is going to have a problem with it maybe controversial here, but they're actually, they're actually very constructive and he almost, it's another window of opportunity that we've seen.
See, the legislature, I believe, is not going to say, oh no, we're not going to let you do that Falmouth to yourselves. We know better than you how you should finance your project. My answer is you politely pound sand, because I think we know best, particularly if town meeting is convinced that this is the right way to go. Yeah, and it's our choice as to is there betterment or is there ain't, but it just, but that's a local decision of how to finance. Doesn't tell us what to build. That's the other side of the cost equation. Here's how we can get 400 million to apply to whatever we build. But that construct doesn't give us the answer to is it clusters or is it satellite or is it centralized? All those remain on the other half of the financial question. What are you going to purchase with the money you got?
Any other questions? Okay. Under our agenda on discussion, the first one is on zoning options for treatment and discharge. And I talked with Brian about this because Peter posed a question, should we rezone at least certain segments as a public use? And the short answer is yes, but I think I'd like to ask Brian because I'll be paraphrasing what he told me as to...
On your, on your table, you'll see there's some air photos of the sites and for the public and the audience, I like to put here on this map. It's my understanding that community is looking at a zoning effort for a centralized system here on the 55 acre Dignan, so-called Dignan parcel here. For the actual facility, so I'm telling more members, I gave your guests the air photos. They're looking at possible discharge sites here on the old eighteen holes of the golf course that was once an empty watershed. They're looking at discharge possibilities on the Dorothy Allen parcel we bought some years ago. To be determined, fourteen out of seventy acres that are here. Another discharge possibility would be the amateur of Ball Field area that was purchased some time ago from Mr. P. There's a marking lot there, there's Ball Field there today. You may recall that the last town meeting, we had a discussion with regards to possible land slot with Peterson family, the guys that lined up all the tom land. And one of the questions the committee has is the zoning that's in place today, allow for what for this revision to do, showing to know. In fact, we're looking at a public facility to treat wastewater on the Dignan parcel. We have to zone it public use. Today, the entire area is agricultural, as it should be. Areas in red are water resource protection districts. So that's, that's a given. You're going to have to go to town meeting and for whatever amount of land you need, out of that fifty-five acres, you're going to have to get two-thirds of designed to a public use designation, which allows all municipal uses, including trees, plants, or water towers, or turbines, or whatever. The question as to whether or not a zoning effort will be required for your discharge sites, there's not as clear answer. Right now, my sense is that, in my discussions with Aladio and others, that you probably won't need one if it's going to be below ground, because it's always a passive use. In zoning theory, there's active uses, passive uses. Today, the golf course irrigates its fairways and greens with a sprinkler system. If you want to just hook up a pipe and discharge it in those areas, you don't need a perimeter or zone change to do that, so I see it in theory. If in fact you wanted to have a more active treatment, perhaps as we have today, a treatment plan up on the Maraine, does a spray irrigation type of a facility, that's more active, more above ground. My sense is you're going to need some sort of zoning, really more active discharge process and visible. More likely you're going to need some sort of zoning action by town meeting. The good news is, if in fact you need to go to town meeting for that purpose, for the Dignan parcel, you may want to just play it safe. And for those areas that you know you may need in the future, ask town meeting to zone it for municipal purposes and all questions will be answered. But that's the short answer is yes on Dignan. Perhaps on the others, keep it underground probably.
Sand filtration beds?
Yes.
Why not? Well, we understand that sand filtration would be open pools, well, above ground, but, and visible, and any intrusion, that would then be less likely to not need a zone change.
I think the more above ground...
I got that double negative right now.
No, you didn't.
My sense is if you're going to have something akin to a retention pond or detention pond, or especially a sub nutrient, visible above ground, active, so it can fall in. If there were sand filtration beds below the surface, you know, you can dig it out, cover it up, residue with it, passive, can't see it, more likely not. But something along the lines of what you're talking about for detention, retention. That's the short answer on that. But my sense is if the community's looking for a major capital investment, put that article on first, maybe decide that. The regulatory framework from their financial business, but that's tactical.
Does Kent Forest today do above-ground irrigation spraying, even fertilizer spraying for appropriate properties?
That's because the legislature, in their wisdom, has exempted those activities from local zoning ordinances. So agriculture, certain educational uses can act at discretion without the need for any kind of discretionary for these rezonations, if they have a certain acreage. Our community, because of certain agricultural zoning designations, and you could farm stand on a quarter, you know, you may be in the bill or residential...
So we could just get somebody a concession for a farm stand to grow tomatoes, and just do it without a zone.
Everything's on the table, urge.
Does anybody else have questions, or Brian? Good fertilizer. Any other questions?
Brian, what, at the North Falmouth Elementary School where we have the soccer field for the new Silver Beach plan, is that a piece of property public use?
Yes, it is.
But wasn't it already public use because of the school? So it was already zoned appropriately, or didn't come up? Well, we haven't looked at schools yet, but...
I feel like that's your call, committee, on that.
Since we're pursuing this line of questioning, the Williams Street site, where there is that small pocket plant, was that rezoned by town meeting?
The Sally McKinney house? I don't remember. I can't recall.
Yeah, but I think it was.
I think it was.
I think it was. Now, we have a pump station in Woods Hole off Gardner Road, I think.
And you'll see, you'll see little pockets of public use down on Palmer Avenue, on Catholic Base, the community did that.
We did, okay.
For your satellite or your accessory uses, like the pump station, your site is active use.
Okay. I, I think that's pretty clear guidance. Thank you. And Brian, if I'm recalling right, when we spoke earlier, that you would suggest when the plan is solidified as to what you want to do, and you go to town meeting with the financing request board, I believe you said at the same time, the zoning request should be there too, so that they can occur simultaneously. Is that correct?
It's up for discussion by the boards, if you want to, you know how much the town meeting loves zoning articles. Do you want to bring the finance in first and have a complete discussion about that? It's up to the boards, but usually you would like to put everything in a package, it all lined up and out the door. And it might be that your finance people require a zone change.
A timetable for that. Ideally, although I'm not so sure it's going to happen this way, in fact, preliminary financing for permitting and design would be in the spring of 2011. We may not be ready for it then. Create some other financing impediments, but, but in fact, construction of whatever it is, probably will not happen until sometime around 2016. So, so there's a lot of lead time and prep time for a number of the, of the advanced stages. But there's also sort of the need to have town meeting take on faith, the first call of $15 million permitting and design money in advance of having some of these questions dealt with. That's a tough sell, but maybe possible.
Well, it depends first, the chicken or the egg, Gary. I would think you'd have to have the land lined up first before you even start talking about the money. Especially if you're going to start permitting, you've got to have a place to permit it on.
Oh, yeah.
I think the zoning should be pushed down first. And there's no necessary delay or window for that. You can just zone, you can zone it next fall if you wanted it.
Well, keep in mind that no decisions have as yet been made about the what, the where, and the how. So this is in some measure theoretical at this point, but certainly for centralized version, the candidates are West Falmouth, the Country Club, and Otis.
Any other questions? Thanks, Brad. Okay. Next, we're considering the draft nutrient management bylaw. And I don't know whether anybody in your end wants to make comments on it.
Well, I asked John Waterbury, who along with George Hoyfelder has done a lot of the work, the initial legwork, groundwork, in developing this draft, to, to make sort of a brief presentation for the audience, and so that everybody's sort of on the same page and then we can talk.
There are extra copies here. People don't have copies of the draft. At our last meeting last week, I gave a PowerPoint presentation that basically went through the, went through the bylaw. This is something that we have been developing as a subcommittee of the nutrient management group over the last couple of years. And that group included Bob Rittenhour and Heather Harper, Brian Curry, Pat Harris from the Attorney's Office, Jared Catanas, and George Hoyfelder, and myself. And so that draft has, has been discussed with the planning board previously, with the Conservation Commission, with the Board of Health. It's been looked at carefully by the Town Attorney's Office. And we've also sent it to, this winter, to the Cape Cod Commission and to the Cape Cod Flyer, there's water protection. And so that it's, it's evolved quite a bit. I think simply stated, what it tries to do is protect the rights that people have at the moment. So it's, it's based on two standards. One standard is four bedrooms per acre, which is taken from Title V and is the standard for areas of nitrogen-sensitive areas. And the second standard that we have used is the nitrogen standard, which is 12 milligrams per liter. That's a standard which we currently use for developments of five or more lots, where we ask them to do a cluster system and we ask them to treat the 12 milligrams per liter. That standard has been developed at the test county test center out at the base and through experience of George Hoyfelder with a number of systems in Viceville County. And we think at the moment is a reasonable standard. The way we have set the bylaw up is it says throughout the bylaw, must meet the nitrogen standard. And so what we've done is in the definition, we've defined what that standard is. So if at some point after we pass this bylaw, we decide we want to change that standard, we can go to town meeting and we simply have to change the one definition and it then carries through the entire bylaw. So instead of having to do it in 10 different places within the bylaw. And then basically it goes through single-family dwellings. Basically what we tell people is that your grandfathered with what you've got. Whatever you have at the moment is what you get to keep. In the case of single-family residences, we've decided that, you know what, two-bedroom cottage really doesn't constitute a home where you could raise a family of four people. So that we've made what we think is a general allowance that any two, any two-bedroom house can be brought up to three bedrooms without having to go through a lot of procedural changes. And then, then for, for multi-family residences, basically the same thing, your grandfathered with what you've got, and we make allowances for them to make changes. And with the non-residential properties, again, grandfathered with what you've got at the moment, we have a provision in there, if you're in an upper watershed and you want to upgrade your business, will allow you an additional 350 gallons of flow a day before you have to upgrade to an alternative system, meeting a 12-milligram standard. So that in, in essence is what it is. The bylaw is written so that it comes under the regulation of the Board of Health, so that variances are heard by the Board of Health. Within areas that actually get sued, DDP will assign the town a certain flow that that facility will be able to accommodate, so that before the Board of Health could grant a variance for an additional flow within a sewer service area, they would have to go to the sewer superintendent and have him say that there is in fact additional flow capacity available for the project that you're considering, before the Board of Health could even entertain a variance within a sewer service area. So that in essence is the way it's set up. I think it, it sort of has a substantial implication for the planning board in the sense that if we were to adopt this, it essentially means that the old coastal pond overlay districts will, will go away and this will sort of supersede those. What we're basically saying, if you look at the map in the back, the map was given to me by Tom Van Gery from the Cape Cod Commission. It's taken from the regional policy plan that was just approved last year. It is the USGS indications of the watersheds in Falmouth. You'll notice that we wrote the bylaw without indicating whether a coastal pond had a TMDL or not. In other words, we have coastal ponds which have not yet gotten their TMDLs. So we simply wrote the bylaw in general, any coastal pond which has a watershed defined by the county will be included, so that as things come online, we don't have to go back and keep modifying. Now, the hooker in this is, and I think one of the things which we should discuss tonight, is if you look at that map, there are certain areas of Falmouth where you have watersheds that do not feed into coastal impound. Now, they're, they're very small, about 80% of the town falls into watersheds that lead into coastal impounds. But for example, in North Falmouth, from West Falmouth Harbor north to Old Silver Beach, there's an area where that watershed discharges out below the flops there, right into Buzzard's Bay. And so that probably should not be included in this bylaw. The same thing is true in an area in Sympo Wisset, north of Wisset Harbor and south of the Little Sympo Wisset Marsh. There's again, an area of watershed that discharges again into Buzzard's Bay. And so I think one of the challenges, if we go ahead with this, is that we are going to have to sit down with the town planning department and go lot by lot and make a determination so that people can go on the town website, look at a map and say, well, I fall into that area in North Falmouth, which is not under the, under this bylaw. And so that will be one of the projects that we'll need to undertake this summer before we present this to town meetings. The other, the other piece is that the four bedrooms per acre is based on the assessor's records of the number of bedrooms. And so what we did, we used this basis when we set up the bylaw for New Silver Beach. In that case, we had 200 property owners. We sent them by registered mail a letter that said, according to our records in town, you have three bedrooms. If you wish to change that or contest it, please come to the office and get it changed. Now, we can't do that with, I don't know, what do we have, 25, 20,000 or 25,000 property owners. But what we thought we could do is we certainly can send a postcard. And one of the things which I think we should probably do if we were going to take this to fall town meeting, we probably should slip that date from, we've been slipping that as we go along. But I think it makes sense to slip it to September 1st, 2011, so that people would have the summer, all that winter and the next summer, after we've mailed the postcards, to be able to get to the assessor's office and make sure that they agree with the number of bedrooms that they have in the assessor's office or the Board of Health could go out and where there's things could check on that. So that's basically where it is at the moment, and we would sort of appreciate any additional comments that...
Questions, John?
Just a moment. I really want to express appreciation for the amount of effort and work. John was kind enough to forward to me some of the earlier drafts, I think two or three of them. And this is quite a bit tighter and different, and it takes a huge amount of work to put a document like this together.
Virginia actually made it, so that it wouldn't miss form.
You weren't supposed to say that!
In any case, it really doesn't change the amount of work it takes to put a document together of this nature. And so appreciation for all of whomever took part in doing this, the effort involved in it. Thank you.
This is well put together. It's a nice job. But the question I have is maybe explain a little bit more how a homeowner can get four bedrooms if you only have three. And do you have to go over for review board of the health?
Well, the way this is set up is, is we use a real estate acre of 40,000 square feet. So what it basically says is, for every 10,000 feet of real estate that you own, you're entitled to a bedroom. So if you have an acre and a half, 60,000 square feet, you can put a six-bedroom home on.
Nice.
And if you have a lot which is less than an acre, but it's otherwise a qualified, buildable lot according to all the rules of the building department, then you're allowed to put a three-bedroom home on.
What if you have an existing three-bedroom home on a 12,000 square foot lot in the sort of area?
Then what we've said is, your grandfathered with what you've got. Whatever you have at the moment is what your grandpa... So if you have a five, if you have a 5,000 square foot lot...
We're going to take public comment and questions later, so thank you, and you'll be called on later, okay?
Just as an example, if you have a tiny little 5,000 square foot lot somewhere in town now, and it has a five-bedroom house on at the moment, you will be able to keep in perpetuity that five-bedroom house.
Okay. Does anybody else from the board have further questions or comments?
Yes, to comment, this is actually a very conservative change in the sense that it does nothing to reverse any damage that's already been done. It's an effort, I guess, to prevent any further damage from being done. Nonetheless, we're going to hear a lot of political opposition from people who are standing up for their property rights, even as conservative as it is. Comment, it's an observation.
Perhaps we should say why we need the bylaw.
Yeah, I just want to, excellent job explaining the bylaw, but understand that combined with the discussion of how we would finance or go forward with this whole project, the state is in essence offering what amount to almost 0% loans to communities that are prepared to go forward with this project and comply with a certain set of rules. One of the main caveats in there is that you can't build a sewer system that then encourages growth inside the area of the service. And so therefore, you have to have a place, some form of regulatory bylaw, something that would control that. And this is an example of a bylaw that would meet that requirement, would then, it's on the checklist, we can't go get money from the state at 0% cost if we don't have this bylaw or the equivalent they are in place.
And there are two other reasons. One of the other reasons is that, you know, we've been charged by the EPA and through the Access Toys Project to meet these TMDLs in our coastal ponds. But it's not enough to meet them, that we've come up with a strategy that gets us to that number. We have to maintain that TMDL through buildup. So it's not, it's not enough for us to simply meet the goal, we have to maintain. The other little piece of it is that in addition to be able to apply for the zero-interest loan program, we need a nutrient management bylaw. MEFA will also require, as a part of our CWMP submission, submission, that we have a nutrient management bylaw in place. So we need it for a number of reasons.
My point though wasn't that we need to sell it on the basis of public need money to do it. We're going to have people who live up in the center of the community, who are nowhere near a coastal pond, who are just going to block at the infringement on their property rights because of what's going to happen way, way downstream from it. They can't even see the water, they can't even see the stream, that's all underground. And we're going to have to do a big selling job on that point, not just taking advantage of our financial opportunity, but, but selling is a basic need for it and why it is in the interest of the community as a whole to do this, because people who live up in Hatchell aren't going to see it. They don't live anywhere near coastal ponds.
Well, and I, I think the map does that very beautifully, in other words. You, you look at those watersheds, they basically encompass 80% of the town. And so that, and I think as we begin to talk about financing, we're going to ask the town in general to participate in this project, all they need to do is look at this map to understand that almost every one of us is part of the problem and has an impact on coastal ponds, so.
Well, yes, what I'm telling you is that the people in Hatchell aren't going to necessarily appreciate having to pay and having to limit their property rights, just so that the ponds that they don't live on, the people downstream, way downstream, a couple miles away, won't have to smell the algae and so forth. But that's going to be a sell, because there's going to be people, you have to understand more than just that, you know, considering you're going to have to sell the economic impacts of what's happening to our, you know, marshes and our estuaries. You're going to have to sell that, and it's going to be a big sell, I think, because people, you know, we have the coastal pond overlay districts now, and that's understandable. That's direct, people who live in the coastal ponds, yeah, everybody understands they do that. We saw what happened, not to drag up old history, but we saw what happened up at Silver Beach, when we started, you know, an initial project to have treatment of sewers locally, but then we moved the treatment off to a neighborhood miles away, and we had lawsuits and wound up costing millions of dollars more years later than it should have, because it wasn't sold correctly in the first place. And I think this is a project that's going to have to be sold well upstream throughout the whole town, first of all, on the basic need for it, not simply that it's an economic opportunity, not simply that all the properties contribute to this problem, but people have to understand why this problem has to be fixed. And it's for the benefit of the whole town, and they have to be able to see this for the benefit of the whole town, not just for the people who live in the areas, in the affected areas. That's my point, it's a political point, but it's important.
Words here, so?
Question or comment?
All right. Chapter 185.5, I, I'm not familiar with that. When you talk about variances pursuant to chapter 185.5, are you talking about a variance about the number of bedrooms or the number of gallons, or how, when you talk, throughout this thing, you talk about variances pursuant to chapter 185.5. So what is that variance for?
It would be for additional flow or bedrooms, depending on, I mean, if you were, if you were a residence, it would be discussing bedrooms. So in other words, if you, you wanted to have additional bedrooms. If it's a non-resi- If it's a non-residential property, it would be additional flow.
Okay, okay, thank you. On the, if, the pages aren't numbered, but on the third page in the center, under C, it talks about wastewater flows and so forth, determined by metered water consumption. What if the person has a private well? How have you dealt with that?
Now, this, you're looking under non-residential...
Non-residential development, C1A.
Non-residential properties are business properties, not dwellings.
Okay, so what if they have a private well?
Businesses wouldn't.
A private residence or a multifamily residence is dealt with on the number of bedrooms that they have.
Right.
And the number of bedrooms are dictated by the area of their lot. In other words, for every, for every 10,000 square feet of lot, they are allowed a bedroom. So the flows don't become an issue until you get to non-residential commercial properties, where depending on the type of commercial use, Title V talks about flow rather than, and so there would be an adjustment to flow rather than to bedrooms.
I understand that, John, but I still say that that particular paragraph refers to annual metered water consumption.
Right.
And so my question is, what if they have a private well and they're not getting metered water into their facility?
I don't believe that situation exists in Thalmud. I don't believe there's any commercial property that's on a private well. The town, well, Ray Jack is here, can you name any businesses that are on private wells?
I'm not aware of any, but it doesn't mean that there could not be but a simple, short fix by virtue of having a private well and still meter it for the purposes, so.
And normally, what, this is, that's simply covering where Title V fails. If you look through Title V, most types of businesses are given specified flows. And it's only the rare exceptions where Title V, if you've got some exotic business that doesn't fall under what's in Title V, then you would defer to the flow.
Okay. On the next page, chapter 180-53, the first paragraph there, you talk about that the method acceptable to the Board of Health may be substantiated if the applicant can demonstrate a reduction. If you don't specify how much of a reduction or a percentage, so isn't that leaving it pretty loose?
Well, not really, because what may happen is that because of all the low-flow devices that we've got on place, that there may be situations where the concentrations in the effluent is much higher than we normally think of it is in Title V. And so if someone has an alternative technology and it's not getting down to, say, our standard of 12, but they're still getting a 75% reduction in a stronger, because they have a higher concentration on their inflow, then the board would say, okay, look, you may not be able to meet the letter of the law of that nitrogen standard, but in fact, because of the strength of your effluent, you are getting a comparable reduction in the nitrogen thing. And so it would be that sort of a calculation that, and I think that's something that the Board of Health would be pretty comfortable in dealing with. And I don't think that we want to hamstring ourselves by putting in percentages and things there.
Okay. At the bottom of that page, number B, I mean, letter B, 180-55 variances, B, I'm wondering if that language in the very last sentence shouldn't say "does not exist" rather than "exists"? It seems that that language confused me a little bit there.
Well, I must say, I pretty much nicked that from Title V. So that variance language is almost verbatim what is in Title V. And we certainly, I mean, that doesn't mean that the guys who wrote Title V were shaking here, so.
Well, if you wouldn't mind taking another look at that entire paragraph and see whether or not you don't mean that it does not exist rather than exists, I, that language, that language was confusing to me.
The last... But the language, I think, is that there is capacity, not that there is not capacity, correct?
Capacity within the sewer system, correct, to handle it.
You have to look, capacity exists. I think it's right.
So what that is in essence saying is that DEP, when they give us a license for the sewer plant, they'll say, you may treat at this plant 1 billion gallons per day, and we will be taking, for example, 800,000 gallons to that plant. So there's a buffer of 200,000 gallons. So before the board could entertain a variance within the sewer service area, they would need to go to the superintendent of, the wastewater superintendent and say, in your opinion, does there exist capacity for this specific project? And if he says no, then the board will not be able to even entertain a variance.
I would think that you would be giving a variance only if the person couldn't hook up to the sewer system because they have no other choice.
No, someone within the, someone who is in the sewer service area and has a four-bedroom house, and for example, decides that they would like to come and ask for a fifth bedroom. They would apply for a variance within the sewer service area to the Board of Health. The Board of Health would then go to the wastewater superintendent and say, do we have the capacity, excess capacity, to grant that variance? And if he says no, then that's the end of it. If he says there is capacity, then the Board of Health will weigh, is that request within the bounds of what we would like to give a variance for? That it's a reasonable expansion of that property. It doesn't mean that the board has to then grant that variance, but at least they can entertain it at that point.
It is understood there that the condition of the variance is that they actually tie into the system after it's determined that there's a capacity to...
Well, we are assuming that they're already tied into it, and that they, this is a dwelling which has been sewed, and that someone in the future is coming and asking for an expansion.
It's not a variance from Tian, it's a variance for extra bedroom.
Yeah, so the condition of that is that they are in or will be here.
Do you have any further?
Still, the only other thing I have is, this is very minor, but page two, the bottom, 2A, let's see, at the bottom, new development under 2A, you say every 10,000 square feet? I just wrote down, does that mean land or does that mean area for the house? I mean, we actually have houses today that are greater than 10,000. It's sad, but true, but I understand, but anyway, I understand what you're saying. I'm just trying to get you to laugh.
You were successful.
You were.
Has any other board member got any other questions? I went over this and came up with questions or areas of questionable product, and I don't know whether anybody would agree or not, but I think it will come up in one context or another, so I listed them. And one is jurisdiction, because what we have here is an omnibus bylaw that incorporates planning board functions, which is development limitations. It incorporates enforcement functions, which currently, to the best of my knowledge, fall under the building commissioner as far as buildings go, and the Board of Health. It has Board of Health functions, determination of adequacy of sewage treatment, and the zoning Board of Appeals, which from the planning board perspective is the Board of Relief. So the question that I think needs to be contemplated here is, is it good policy to have all of these functions in one board? If not, how should it be split out? Or should there be a separate board specifically put together for administration of this bylaw since it will incorporate such a large part of town? So that is one thing that I think needs to be thought about. A second one is enforcement issues. And right now, the building commissioner currently enforces the number of bedrooms, and it's governed by the permit only, and it is enforced through complaint. Where as far as I know, no other way of enforcing the number of bedrooms. We've seen a number of plans that call for bonus rooms, and we say, yeah, right, as soon as the inspection is done, they'll come in with their carpenter friend and put in whatever they want, we know that. So we have an enforcement issue, I think, and that needs to be thought about, and is there any way to take care of this? We just don't happen to have bedroom police in this community. Then there's also the monitoring, when you're talking about water usage. The water department has the capacity to monitor all the water flows, but who's going to be doing the enforcement if something happens? Who's going to be doing the oversight of the reportage from the water department? How is that going to be structured? And then, as before, who's going to have the ultimate responsibility? If you break it apart, are there going to be different responsible agencies? Will it be under the Board of Health? Would you put together a new entity to oversee this? Again, it is a huge, huge project. I think equity is a huge question that Rich brought up, it is absolutely huge. We tried a number of years ago to get through town meeting, a five-foot increase in side-yard setbacks that would help with this build-out of very, very small lots. It took, I don't know, maybe three people getting up at town meeting screaming about we were taking away their property rights, and they went right down. I would be extremely concerned that limiting the number of bedrooms, even though it is equitable the way it has been written, because there's no favoritism in here, I would be extremely concerned that there will be an absolute howl at town meeting, that you are taking away my property rights as to how I can and want to use my property. That's going to be faced head-on, because it would be terrible if all of this work were put into it and you couldn't get this through because of the bedroom issue.
Big issue.
It is a big issue. And because there is such a small fraction, John, you said 20% that may not be covered under this bylaw, the newspaper article today I said, I believe, said 10%, but it's small. I really have a question when you're dealing with equity, should all the homes in Thalmud be covered by this bylaw? And something you may want to contemplate. Then, there is this question that has come up before our board lots of times, when we have required a denitrification system, because my assumption is that in the interim, when you're saying, oh, it's probably going to be 2016 before we put a spade in the ground, we're going to be requiring denitrification systems, the Board of Health is going to be requiring denitrification systems, that's not going to go away. Now, I've been told this is up to maybe $30,000 to put in a D-Nite system, I don't know that for a fact, so this could just be, you know, a number thrown out there. So you put in a D-Nite system because it's required, and then the sewer system becomes operational, say, within five years of you having put in a D-Nite system. Now, you're smacked with, say, another $30,000 as part of your contribution to the system, maybe less than that. That's really going to have to be contemplated, and I am with the part of your board, your committee that says, share it equally on a tax rate basis throughout the town. We all enjoy the waterways. It should be shared equally, because if you're going to, by the way, I'm using a generic "you", I'm not pointing a finger at you, but if you're going to, I would say, I'm going to use the term inequitably, price people out of this, they're going to be leaving town and they won't be able to get rid of their homes either, because there's so much expense entailed with just disposing the wastewater. So I think that when you're deliberating, that is something really important that you have to think about, and if you want my vote, it's for sharing it on a tax base.
Maybe once we have a solid plan in place, you might consider not requiring those if it's only going to be five years before the...
But that's something that would have to be seriously discussed as to how you want to, John?
I mean, this is a discussion which we've had with the, the Board of Health has had with the planning board for years, Ken Foreman being a primary proponent of IA systems, and the Board of Health saying, hey, you know, just doing this willy-nilly around town is going to lose its votes when we have the fund of sewer. And so I think, you know, we want to be very circumspect about putting in IA systems as we move forward until we have our plans well in place. If I could just go back to this fitness of jurisdiction enforcement and monitoring...
Can I, could I, could you hold that just for a moment? I've got a couple of other things on this, please. Got to be long-winded tonight.
Keep right here.
There are conflict issues with the current zoning policy, and two of them I saw, there may be others, but these two popped out. We have a transfer of development rights, it's probably been used about four times since it was put into our bylaw. And this allow, it's a planning tool, and it allows density movement around. That would be disallowed in this plan. I don't, as far as I, the way I'm reading it, you could no longer have a transfer of development rights, and that's our Article 36 versus your 180-54. And it could be the way I'm reading it, it may not be right, but I think you need to look at that, because it's either going to require change in our transfer of development rights, which I said has not been used that often, so it could be just knocked out of our bylaws, but it needs to be dealt with. The other one is that the current planning policy is to establish multifamily affordable housing where it is feasible. We are trying to push for that. The redevelopment here of downtown, we're trying to push for that sort of thing. It's less expensive if you can do that, to do a multifamily, this requirement, and I don't know how onerous it would be, I mean, that's the problem, you'd never know, puts another layer of control over whether you can actually do a multifamily residence or not. And every time you put another layer, another hoop that someone has to jump through, it becomes more expensive. The whole thing with multifamily housing and affordable housing is to try to make this as cost-effective as possible. It's just another question I think you should deal with. If no other reason, not necessarily to change this document, but you need to know that some of these questions I think will be coming up. The final thing I have here is, I know, John, you've mentioned that you'd like to get this through in fall town meeting, probably spring town meeting at the latest. But I question that if the plan is not complete yet, might that, when it is complete, result in changes in this document? And so is it perhaps a little premature to bring this before town meeting? That's, and I don't know, that's just something I'm throwing out, I have no clue, your feeling on that or not, but these are the things that occurred to me. Okay, John, you can throw your darts down.
Well, you know, jurisdiction enforcement and monitoring are all things that the Board of Health does under Title V, all the time. And we don't find that it's a really onerous problem. You know, people will come in and ask us for a variance. The first thing that we turn and ask our agent is, how many bedrooms does the assessor's records say that property has? And he says, three. And we look at the engineer, how have you designed the system that you're asking for a variance? And he says, I've in fact designed it for three bedrooms. And we proceed. And we proceed. If he says, I've designed it for five bedrooms, and the assessor's record says three, then we send the agent and the engineer out to look at the property and make a determination of what was happening. And this is just standard operating procedure, and it's not burdensome, and works very well, and I don't think we're getting in trouble with it. So, I mean, this is taking on a big workload, but I think it's something that the board of health is prepared to take on. I don't think that it changes the mode at which they operate, or the conditions under which they operate. And I don't think it would really be that much of a problem. Brian and I have discussed many times about, should, I mean, the whole town be declared a nitrogen-sensitive area? That is in fact what they did in Chatham. And I think they could do that legitimately in Chatham. Everything in Chatham went into a, the bayonet. But I think we have a legitimate situation where we've laid out the watersheds for our coastal embayments, and we have some legitimate areas which do not go into coastal embayments. And I think, to me, it's bad policy to just say, well, you know, those 15 or 20% or whoever those people are in that land area, it's just going to make it easier for us if we just say everything is a nitrogen-sensitive area, when in fact, you can't make a reasonable argument why that, those areas should be included. So my intuition was, even though it makes considerably more work for us, we've got to sit down and produce a map lot by lot, which says, which areas are we going to include in those areas that are not going to be under the jurisdiction of this bylaw, I still think it's the best and the best way to proceed. I can certainly be persuaded otherwise, but to me, that makes the most sense. The transfer rights, the zoning issues, the way we have written this is that someone cannot transfer their nitrogen rights. In other words, if I have a two-bedroom cottage, and I'm given by right the addition of another bedroom, I'm not allowed to sell that, the right for that bedroom to my next-door neighbor who doesn't in fact have that right. And that's all that this is saying, that you can't transfer the nitrogen rights. And I don't see that that gets us into conflict. I think we do want to encourage multifamily residences. One of the things which, you know, we've all been struggling with are the 40B projects in town. And, you know, DEP has finally come around, I forget the name of the big one that we've discussed.
Little Pond.
Little Pond Development. I mean, they basically came around to saying, that project could have a zero nitrogen impact when it was built. And so, to me, that is saying that they, the DEP has recognized that in these nitrogen-sensitive areas, that 40B projects can't blow the lid off of your TMDL. So what we've done in here is basically say that, you know, multifamily projects, new ones, will have to be built with systems that meet the nitrogen standard if they're outside, if they're in the sewer service area, they're just going to be up to the sewer. And we would certainly encourage, that would be ideal. But if they're in the upper watersheds, then they shouldn't be able to blow our TMDL, they need to be, to meet the nitrogen standard that we have.
That's, however, that conflicts with planning board policy. We are concerned, obviously, with, we've done a lot in that area with coastal pond overlays, but we're also concerned with affordable housing. That's a very important concern for us as an overall planning agency for the town. So that, as Pat says, now this requirement is going to make it much more difficult for people like Bob Martin, who went on to do a project. But now it's going, in addition to having to beat ordinary construction costs and set aside a minimal number of market units that he needs to finance the project, now he's going to have even more costs. And that's going to deter people from doing that kind of a project, which is something that we on the planning board don't want to do. We have conflicting interests here, but we look at, these are both being important interests. Perhaps one thing that could be done is that you could print a certain percentage for any multifamily projects, and if they are, let's say, more than 60% affordable, you waive the tie-in fee.
Well, in fact, that's what we have a variance procedure for, so that people can come.
But make that clear. Make that clear.
With a specific project and say, you know, you look at it and say, well, you know, there's a real benefit for us to be able to do this, therefore, it's worthy of granting a variance.
Well, put it in, put it in the bottom line, that that is one specific criterion for getting the bylaw is, if you are, or the variance rather, is if you are a certain percentage affordable, then you can get a variance, or, which may just simply be a waiver of the tie-in fee. So you're not getting a variance on the, yeah, you're getting a variance, and you can make it affordable by way of the tie-in.
I mean, I certainly think that's a reasonable goal. The board of health has always had a philosophy that you don't try and delineate in minutia what the conditions are that you're going to create a variance for. So that you can look at each case specifically, and in your collective judgment, make a decision about whether a specific project should be varied or not.
And that makes sense from a, from a health perspective. From an affordable housing perspective, however, it makes a lot more sense to put it right out there. That's the carrot for the developer. That's the carrot, you spell it right up. Yeah, okay, you got this parcel of land, you want to put a lot of people, multiple units there, well, here's how you do it. You know, you put the carrot out there, and maybe we get, we get both here.
Well, I think, again, it's a legitimate philosophical difference between how the planning boards and the board of health function. And, you know, we can chat about, I mean, this is one of the things I think we need to chat about, but it's a, it's a real philosophical difference.
I mean, the ability to get the variances in there, why bog each up down with more language?
I, yeah. My comment, I know Pat and Richard have commented on it as well, but this ultimately will definitely have an impact on affordable housing. You try to push it down here, and you're raising it up here, and it's like this, and that's just one issue, and, you know, the soaring of the town is really a vital situation we have to deal with. And I'm just saying as a comment that it will, you know, essentially will affect it.
John, I want to make a comment. I don't know or care whether the board of health chooses to drown in work, that's your choice, but my comment was, is it a good policy decision to have all of those functions, zoning, health, relief, and enforcement in one entity? I'm just saying, contemplate it. Because that's, that smacks of dictatorship, I think. I can't think of another way of explaining it. But on the other hand, the board of health has those right now, except for zoning. So I don't know how it will be perceived. So I'm simply asking, think about it as a policy decision that you all are making to recommend to the town. I'm not weighing in one way or another.
I guess, I guess the way I would answer that is, is to look at the history of the board of health. The board finds itself in litigation very, very rarely. It's always had a philosophy that, you know, when you come through the door, we're going to find a solution for your problem. You may not particularly like it, but there's going to be a solution. And that philosophy has served that board very, very well. And I, you know, if, if the board had had a history of, of, you know, running into rats' nests all the time, I would say, yeah, we need to think about this more carefully. But I think as a board, it has had a history. I mean, it's, it is given by the states in an ordinate amount of power. In fact, this very, this very bylaw that we're suggesting that we take to town, to town meeting, could have been, after a couple of public meetings, been written as a board of health regulation and passed by fiat by five guys. And we made a very conscious decision that that was a very poor political decision to make, and that this was so important that it needed to be taken as a bylaw to town meeting to get the whole town meeting to approve it.
I do understand, and I do applaud you for that. It's simply something I'm bringing you up because the question might come up, and I think you need to consider it. And there may be others that might come up. I just use my imagination and let it run wild on as to see what potential questions would be. As you pointed out, something of this order is necessary to get through. And hopefully, it would get through on the first pass. The way to get it through, it with any hope on the first pass through town meeting, is to try to foresee the objections and the questions that might be thrown at you and prepare answers for those, or if you decide, whoops, maybe we made a little mistake, to do a little tweak here and there. I'm simply trying to be a devil's advocate, throw this back at you and say, I think these things, plus what other board members have brought up tonight, are things that need to be contemplated. You do not need to agree with these comments, but they may come up and you, I think, should be prepared. So are there any other questions or comments here? Because if not, I'm going to throw it out to people who very kindly came and listened tonight.
I just want to add one thing.
What?
That despite our, you know, questions to you, I think the general, the general approach and the general idea is to be supported by the planning board. And I think Pat's comment is just simply, if we do that, we want to be sure that we've got something that we can sell, you know, if we put the effort in. That, that's the approach we're taking, not to be critical.
Yes. Could you state?
John Sullivan?
Oh, thank you. John Sullivan?
Yep. From Hatchville.
Should we use a microphone?
We don't have a microphone there. The only thing we do is to.
No, I don't, I don't need a microphone, trust me.
Okay.
Now, one question, you know, I'm sure it was mentioned under a different moniker, but recharge wells, that wasn't mentioned. It was mentioned in the paper, and one of them was read at Sandwich Road and Ballfields. And you might have answered under a different, like I said, under a different moniker, but my question was whether they're underneath the ground, if they're on top. The people, the neighbors up there, including myself, were all for ballfields. There was no talk about wastewater, when all the people were for the ballfield. And to turn around and talk about wastewater in an area that was sold for a playground and ballfields, we're obviously going to have a lot of questions, obviously, when's it going to be from me? And if you're going to take that area, is it going to be visible? Is it going to be visible for the road, from the road? How is it going to be set up? I mean, those questions are extremely important. Because that, you know, those ballfields, they were sold as ballfields, they were sold as a playground, that's what they were sold for. And start talking about wastewater, if you think there's not going to be a, what, there's certainly, there certainly is. And I have a, a little bit of a difference with the chairman, as far as that's concerned. As you were talking, I don't know the terminology like you do, but you were talking about the nitrogen filling for those people near the ponds, that they might have to put up an expense if, if the sewage wasn't here.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me give you the other point of view. Let's go back to Hatchville. But who knows when sewage is going to come out there? Who knows when? The hookups are going to come out there. And what you want to do is charge the people in Hatchville every single solitary year. Now, what if they happen to be a septic in that period of time? So is it okay with you for those people to be stuck paying the taxes that you want to charge the whole town, and also have to pay for their septic that they're going to have to buy until they're hooked up?
That's the question that they are going to have to wrestle with. Absolutely.
Oh, you're just pushing empty hands. You already gave your opinion on the other one, but that one, you're pushing over to them.
I came from the Westworth Hall on the tax base, come on.
Let me address this, John.
Yes, sir.
I mean, the last question, that's, the point I was making was that the people in the town are going to have to realize how important the estuaries and, and these waters are to the community as a whole. What we're seeing happening in the Gulf of Mexico, the oil that's in the Gulf itself, you know, on the Gulf, the sea water itself is the issue. It's the oil that's washing up on the beaches and getting up into the marshes, which have nursery habitat for, for all kinds of commercially important species of fish. That is a very important interest of the community as a whole. And what people well upstream have to be learning, be aware of, is that's why we're doing this. We're not doing this to favor people downstream who don't want to smell the algae. That's not the reason.
And if I was to give a suggestion, in their planning, that you push over to them, right? You have some people in Hatchville that don't happen to be quite as wealthy as maybe some of the people who live underwater. Right? Now, some of the people who live underwater, chances are, are going to survive a little financial hardship. One, and some people might in Hatchville. So the only thing I'm saying is that maybe if you're planning for the money, that if somebody in Hatchville, just using that term for your brother, that somebody in Hatchville needed a septic, you know, and they were paying, you know, like everybody else in town, the way you want to do it, or there may be some adjustment on to be made in your planning, so that that septic is taken care of, as well as the sewage for the people that are going to be hooked up right away.
Let me, Rich?
He wants to say something.
I'm dying to say something here, because you have just illustrated what for me, classically represents the tension that we face.
Absolutely.
That those who would say, put it all on the tax base, versus those who would say, nobody really says this, put it all on a betterment. I don't think anybody really believes it should all go on a betterment. But where in the middle of that is equity for all? And the way this is going to get decided is because all of these financial questions will have to be dealt with on a debt exclusion, which means ballot vote. Now, the sewered area in total will represent maybe a third of the electorate, that's not me yet, but a third of the town. So the other two-thirds are going to have to, one way or another, agree on whatever element of equity is proposed to them, whether it's all on taxes, or whether it's some betterment and some taxes. And that's a question that we collectively will have to come to a political judgment about. So it's not going to be the wastewater plan committee or the planning board, it's going to be us collectively that will ultimately have to decide that.
And a recharge well is a public ground, a lower ground.
Can I, can I deal with that?
Okay, Johnson.
Just to put your mind at ease, if you go, if you go to the North Falmouth Elementary School, we just built a little package treatment plant to serve 200 homes in New Silver Beach. That discharge is under a soccer field at the, at the elementary school in North Falmouth. It's a classic way of discharging treated effluent, it's underneath ballfields. And you will never know what's there.
So they, well, you just told me.
You know, the classic was when we first suggested that, and we were dealing with the parent teachers organization in North Falmouth. And they said, my God, you can't put sewage underneath our kids' playing field. And we simply pointed out to them that their kids were playing at the moment on an old playground in, at the North Falmouth Elementary School, which for years had been taking the effluent, untreated effluent from the school. So, you know, it's, it's under the ground, people don't think about it. And so, it's a, it's a, sort of a classic place to discharge highly-treated sewered effluent.
But, yes, but I want to have a point of clarification here, because you've used the word injection wells several times.
Recharge.
Recharge. Okay. But I did write down injection wells, because at some point, that's what you said. There are two different technologies. There, there are injection wells, they were proposed along Route 151, a total of 12, 12 of them. If the effluent were treated at the Massachusetts Military Reservation, injection wells do go down into the groundwater. What we are discussing here is basically sand filter beds, if we can call it that, that are underneath the ground. So that they're filter beds, they're in the unsaturated zone of the, of the aquifer, and they occur under all kinds of ballfields, parking lots, it's a very common technology. And I want to make that, that clear distinction, that injection wells on 151 and sand filter beds are two different things.
And John got back to your second point, and I wanted to emphasize what you said. The issue that, that they had in Silver Beach was not the treated effluent going into the school ball field. The issue was, where was the treatment plant itself going to be sited? The reason that became a big issue, and I initially supported that project, because they told us that was, that site was going to be, that plant was going to be sited in the neighborhood it served, on Crystal Spring Avenue. And this, this raises another very important point that I want to reemphasize. The reason the stock really hit the fan on that was because then they said, oh, no, the original property owner didn't want to sell it. original property owner didn't want to sell it to the town. So they got somebody else who was willing, much closer to the village, to give them a piece of property to sit. And that's when people said, oh no. And myself included, I originally supported it. So but the point I want to, no, this is a very important point.
You get to the point quickly.
This is a very important point. The failure there was a failure of nerve, and this town has been long since, ever since I think the high school land was bought way long ago, of this town to take property by eminent domain when it must be taken. That's what this town has to learn. And that's what we didn't learn in Silver Beach, and that's, if this project is going to go forward, that's what we're going to have to be ready to do, is citing plants and citing things. If original owners, original planners don't want to sell, we have to be willing to, have the political representative say, well, we're going to take them in, and we're going to, you want to take us to court under eminent domain? Okay, that's your right, and we will pay whatever the court says. We have to have the will to do that, otherwise it's going to be lawsuits and lawsuits like what you're seeing, you know.
Okay. Thank you, that's great, thanks. Now, Nancy.
I'd like to shift over to a point that you made. Nancy, you have a gentler voice, can you come a little bit closer to this? I might be able to show more law ways, it would drive me to. A point that you made at the last meeting where the business of these areas that do not have the groundwater plumes going through them. And I agree with you, Pat, that I don't think these areas should be exempt from these regulations. Because I, first of all, I know that the Coalition for Buzzards Bay is trying to keep Buzzards Bay in good condition, and I do know perhaps that the Vineyard Sound is, the solution is to dilution, to pollution, if you really believe that. And I'm sorry that Corinne Peterson for the Coalition for Buzzards Bay, I hope she has heard this, and I'm remiss for not having sent her an email, but I think that you're asking for, for denser development when you exempt an area like that from a bylaw like this. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Is there anybody else who wishes to make a comment or ask a question? Yes.
Sure.
Do say your name.
Stephen Moore. First, under the introduction and rationale, you state many things that are covered already in the coastal pond overlay district bylaw. In addition to that, when I heard Mr. Boyer's presentation, and I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, you said one of the overriding concerns or the overriding needs for this bylaw is financial because of the low interest loan. Seems to me if we're going to pay for sewers, we ought to know how much property value we're giving up for a couple of points of interest, and what kind of a study on the economic impact of the town have you done versus zero, versus a couple of points as to our property values, our rights, and the ability for the town to go forward during this 10 to 15-year period of soaring.
I don't want to take Peter Spender away, but he, he did a very detailed series of analyses of what the difference are in betterments or town costs, if you get a 0% loan, 1%, 2% loan.
Sure, but I.
He's going to come back and review, review all that in detail on July 8th. And, and the town does have the option, of course, and that's the will of the people, and they all want to, they, this bylaw is not a bylaw that's comfortable for them, and they recognize what that will do on the other financial, so there are two parts to this puzzle.
My, my concern is we're passing a bylaw for much of it. Okay?
No, not quite.
Not quite isn't that good.
No, I don't, I think, two or three reasons.
The primary reason for, for passing the bylaw is that we cannot get that massive piece of, that comprehensive wastewater plan approved by the state unless we have a nutrient management bylaw in place. It is, it is a necessary component, as I tried to explain when we started, it's, it's not enough for us to design a sewer system that lets us meet these EPA standards that they've set for our coastal ponds. We have to be able to maintain it as the town goes to build out. And in order to be able to do that, we have to have some way of putting a lid on the amount of nutrients that get, get introduced into those coastal ponds.
So what you're essentially talking about is, is building moratorium for a large part of town for a long time?
No, I don't think that's a building moratorium at all.
Not at all. Well, how are you going to economically overcome what Ms. Kerfoot was talking about before? During the period, from the time you pass this bylaw until the time the sewers are available, you're going to force somebody into an economic decision that is unjustifiable, that is in fact a financial moratorium on construction?
Can I, I just want to, the analogy here, if I can put it out there, is at one point a number of years ago, the state revised their Title V regulations, and by, said, all the towns in the Commonwealth will comply with Title V, and that forced people, that they were selling their homes, they have to go and tear up their yards and put in new septic systems. And there was a lot of what I would call reaction to the state doing that. And this time around where they've said, you must address the nitrogen, rather than coming out and saying, you all now do the following to address the nitrogen, they have said, you all have to come up and meet these TMDLs, all the communities down the Cape, other communities in the state are being able with this, and each community is being told to come up with a way to address that. So it's not, it's not an element that we've, we've looked at, said, this is just what we want to go ahead with, and we're trying to take rights away. We're, we are being directed more or less by the state to come up with a solution, and so the conversation has to continue around, is this the best wording, is this the best solution, will we get to where we need to get to? The alternative to that was the state just coming out, and they've sort of given every community a chance to go ahead with this thing, before they come back and say, well, if you can't do it on your own, then you will have to do it according to our rules. We're all trying to work creatively to get to that answer. And I think you raise a lot of valid points about how the bylaw is written and the impact it may or may not have. And I think, I apologize, I don't have your name down yet, but there is an educational process, you know, a very big educational process, as to whether it's a draconian regulation or a fair regulation. And I think the effort has been to make it as equitable and fair as can be made, and still meet the state's requirements for a bylaw or a regulation that addresses this nitrogen issue. Okay? So there's, there's more than one element to this.
Jerry Vitamis, Vice President. I'm talking about a subject I'm not necessarily an expert on, but I think Trish can't talk about it because she's sitting on this board. On the question of valuation of your property, I probably wrestled at least a year talking to different folks, and I think it's consistent with, it's Dave Bailey told me, and a number of real estate agents have told me, and I'm just passing it on, that the true value of someone's house is more a decision on the number of livable square feet you have, rather than the number of bedrooms. I think that might be something that could be done to validate it and not validate. And again, that's what people tell me, maybe because of what you had said, once you get in the house, you put a wall up, and you don't tell anything about it, and you might have a bedroom, we had a bonus room. I'm not asking you to believe me, I'm not just telling you what other people told me. I have asked a number of people, how do you assess what's going to happen to this town with or without sewers? I've been told, don't waste your breath, it's, it's economic voodoo. Most people would know the value go down, how fast it will go down, has something to do with how fast properties overturn, where the properties are, and all those things. And on your last statement of equity, and this is something I haven't discussed with the board, or this board, is that if, this is going to be a long-term project, 30, 40, 50 years, there may be a variance process that says, if someone's within five or 10 years, they can get an exception to the nitrogen bylaw. So that within 10 years, was pretty certain you're going to get sewers, you don't have to put in an alternative system. That's way outside my authority, but I'm just trying to think outside the box on how to say, we don't want people to pay $30,000 now, and in four, five years, ask them to pay another large chunk. So those are just suggestions for the board, I hadn't explored options with the board, but these are things that I've thought about.
Thank you. Okay.
How far does your voice carry, Ray?
I did hear it in my office.
Thank you. To try to answer your question earlier, which I don't believe has been answered with regard to the timing of the introduction of such a bylaw, it really goes back to, to Mr. Latimer's issue of which came first, the chicken or the egg. So in this particular case, there are implications for soaring and there are implications for not soaring. This is one of the consequences of soaring. And I think it's disingenuous to move forward with discussions about finance, discussions about impacts, without having that discussion about, is there going to be a bylaw that is going to impact the zoning and/or the use of property within the town? My suggestion would be, this was a great discussion, that the sooner the better, something like this is introduced for the public vetting, I think the, better the outcome is ultimately going to be. It's going to be controversial, I think, is, as being kind about it, but that actually has to happen, and it will involve town meeting, it's a very good way of getting the public very involved in the overall soar issues, not to mention the fact that it is tied to finance and funding. Granted, there may be limited funding availability with regard to the low interest loan. Low interest loan is not coming in in the form of $400 million, it may be $50 million or something limited thereof, but it does have a long-term financial capability on a town, as well as there's a funding timeline here. There's, there's a pipeline to get into that funding mechanism that is very narrow, is first come, first served, so the last one in the door is going to be the last one to get any kind of a benefit. And that pipeline that we're talking about, even though we're talking about a construction timeframe in maybe 2015, 2016, that's the same type of pipeline that we are looking at right now. For those towns that get their act together the quickest, they're the ones that are going to be taking the lion's share of that funding. So it would just be my suggestion that this was very good, I think, as an exercise, and to be able to move forward with that discussion at a town meeting level would be beneficial for everybody.
Thank you. And we well know as a planning board frequently, you don't get it through on the first pass, it might be the second or third pass, and as we all know, we have two town meetings per year to take a stab at this. So, and we have also found out that town meeting, in its wisdom, has probably in most instances made us create a better bylaw with their comments. But that was a question that had arisen, as to whether this is the correct time, and Ray answered beautifully, I think. Thank you. Great. Anybody else, questions, discussion? Okay, now, Ken, you wanted to state something, I think, earlier, Jerry.
Yes, I just wanted what the planning board know, that I have actually resigned from the transportation management committee. I just wanted to let you know that for its paper tomorrow.
And I want to thank all of you, I think this is going to be wonderful, the sound of all the charts that we're providing. And I do appreciate your, all the favor.